Kind of does that's up to the village. Otherwise, like if you read the comments, they're supposed to have architectural plans for each of us here. Like with what it's supposed to look like with the actual landscape we requested that last time, so we don't have to do that.
Okay. Oh, yeah, but they addressed.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're live?
Well, we have one minute.
Nope, we don't have one minute. Here's Gary.
Hey, Gary.
Hi, how are you? Good morning. How are you?
Good.
Are we mixed up? You can sit here.
Yeah.
I don't know why it's... Oh, this is... You can move over here. That's fine. You have your packet already anyway, okay. The only thing that wasn't in that packet were the comments, so...
It's one you sent, uh...
Yeah. There you go. Yeah.
Hello, everybody.
Hello, how are you, Manny?
How are you?
How are you?
Good.
Hey, Gary.
Hey, how are you?
See you.
If we're here, I'm gonna call this to order.
Okay.
I think so. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and get started. I'd like to call to order the October eighteenth, um, planning board meeting. Uh, the, uh, new business, let's start with new business. On the agenda is the fifty-six sixty-one First Street LLC, two seventy-five Hudson Street. It's a continuation of our last meeting. For those of you unaware, the property is located on the south side of Hudson Street, approximately three fifty feet west from the intersection of Duncan and Hudson. The applicant is seeking site plan approval. So I see we did get some revised plans that had some additional landscaping, uh, notes in it, so the things that were missing last time. We were all supposed to get, um, like, actual renderings with the landscaping drawings on those two. Do you have those for us?
Yes. The, um, renderings weren't totally completed, so we have, um, the project architect, Mr. Perkins, has, um, something to present here with the, uh, that better depict the plantings.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, we were unable to prepare renderings in time for the meeting in three dimensions. However, we did prepare colored, um, kind of visual aids to identify the species of plants and where they're located, how many are located, attached to the landscape plan. So we kind of attached that so that you have a better visual connection as to what will be where. Um, however, the colored renderings haven't been prepared as of yet, um, depicting the, um, design.
Okay, when do you think you'll have those?
I just want to say, uh, it's dependent on the...
Miss Spalding, we ordered them over two weeks ago.
Okay.
You, you know, circumstances beyond our control, but they pulled every day for the last two weeks.
Okay.
And they, and they just were not ready. They didn't prepare them.
Okay.
It's a very time-consuming process. I'm, I'm not gonna... I do not prepare them myself. I have a subcontractor that prepares the renderings for most of the buildings. However, coincidentally, there's a lot of interest in the landscaping, so we have to identify the landscaping, species, mapping, change, change, sand, black, and stuff. There's a lot of, you know, uh, information attached to all of that. Again, I'm not gonna put in this case for him, but, um, he's just gonna have to kind of prepare. A lot of information attached to all of their things.
I think, um, you did update and identify what they were on the plans.
Miss Spalding, I also brought my landscape architect this year to meet with me, or the, uh, or the plantings, and did you ever need to find it?
Oh, that'd be great.
So if you could describe exactly maybe what detail what you were showing there and...
That'd be great.
Very nice.
Yeah.
That's up there. Okay, good. So just make sure everything's here. All right, along the front, uh, along the front this way, there's three trees. There, there are the, uh, the omelet maple. The omelet maple is a very narrow maple. Essentially, it's the shape like, uh, a candle. Really small, like that, but it's tall. It's a native plant tree. It's always, it's a, it's derivative of some of the other maples, but it's, uh, it's a great tree, a great fall color. And also along there are the, uh, forest pangy, uh, red buds. The red buds are ones that come out in the early spring, where they have the purple flowers, but these, the leaves turn like a, a burgundy color. So it's, it's a, and they're, uh, it's under the, the wires, the, uh, utility wires, and it's one of the accepting trees for, that O and R has for.
Okay.
Small trees under, uh, utility wires. Along the front, there's a couple of different grasses. There's a blue stem, which is a nice blue grass. It stays pretty tight to where it is. It grows about two to three feet tall, so it's, this, this way it reminds the walkway and shields some of the cars. Uh, there's not enough room to put any, anything much else, because there's only about two foot little spread there where you can actually spit something. And then next to that, we have the, um, boxwoods. The boxwoods is, you know, of course, is the, the great shrub. It's, uh, the ones you see in a lot of these nurseries or, uh, upperedums and stuff like that. They carve it into different animals, because you can carve it just about anything, but, so if it gets too high, you can carve it back, and it comes right back to a full shrub.
So I just had a question. I mean, I really don't need a class in botany.
No, it's okay, but I have a...
How, where will you locate them? I think that's the question.
I'm locating, and this goes along the front.
Yeah.
It's going very long to front.
Okay.
Along the walkway.
All right.
Okay? And then behind that, along the walkway next to the building, is the, um, itea. These, this is the itea right here. It's, that's another native.
Okay.
And it's, uh, has, uh, I don't, I get into it, has some nice flowers, nice smelling flowers. They look like bottle brushes, and, but it tends, has a great fall color. It, it kind of is a substitute for the burning bush, which, the burning bush has a red color, but it's, now it's, it's an invasive species, so you can't use it anymore, but this is native.
I don't wanna stop you because I, but I, what I'm mostly concerned with, and if anybody wants to hear more, is, so the, the thirteen that run along the sidewalk, those are holly, they'll be green all year, right?
Thirteen along the sidewalk, the, the, um, boxwoods, yes.
Well, the boxwoods...
The other high, yeah, along this way?
The boxes run along the parking. I, I know they're green all, all year. The other ones that are inkberry holly...
They stay green, too.
They're green all year. And then the ones that are labeled PGV, um...
Yeah, that's the...
Along, that are run along the fence line?
Yeah, that's, that's evergreen.
They're green all year, too. Okay, those are the ones I'm mostly concerned with, so that there's some...
And those will get about twelve, about ten to twelve foot high, and they fill out, and they have nice flowers on them, too.
And then, so the grasses that are in front of the parking, those are just grasses, so they'll come and go?
Grasses, yeah.
Okay.
It's a blue-colored grass.
Okay. That's really what I wanted to make sure of, that we have, like, greenery that's...
The rest is just some grasses around, along the back here, next to the building, the apartment building, and, um, you know, some more boxwood.
Mm-hmm.
It's a mix of grasses, something of, of, uh, sun and shade, and then, and for some color is the, uh, purple cone flower.
Okay.
And that's, that stays, uh, that goes, once it goes to flower, it stays quite a while, and you get a massive amount of birds eating seeds in the fall.
Okay. Does anybody wanna know anything more in detail? I just kinda wanna know what's gonna stay green and what's not. Okay.
So this is, so this is what they're promising to put on the property?
Yeah.
And who will enforce that, that I guess, then?
Okay.
It'll be my job to be so on the site plan.
Okay.
I wanna go, whatever says on the site plan is what I wanna be expecting for.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you. And Jason, there were a few things that you had brought up on your, are those, like, um...
There were those clarifications that we had asked for last time. A lot of those clarifications have been, uh, through the submission. Um, the EAP was completed, I think we completed SECR last month. There were some general comments, the GML was completed, we discussed one fifty-one ten. They've done their best to screen the parking area. We discussed one fifty-one dash one. The board will discuss that tonight. And there are general comments, and I think that, um, discussions, actually, the village attorney, that there's gonna be a requirement for some bonds being posted for the work inside the right-of-way, as far as the utilities, about the DEA. Uh, there's some more site plan comments that I think need to be addressed. A lot of them pertain to detailing for the water sewer connections and some stuff that goes along with that, and then just some clarifications between some of the newer details that were provided and some of the elements on the site plan. But, uh, I think those are things that, um, the, the larger items were addressed between last submission and this one.
Yes, I just had a question. The, in the underside plan review, the number one, what does it mean? Proposed sewer line shall be relocated to ten feet?
Uh, the sewer line was very close. The proposed sewer line is closer to the property line than I would prefer to see it, especially because it's gonna be entrenched, and it only requires that it's ten feet from the proposed water line, so we're asking them to move it further into their property. I think it'll be more convenient for both them during construction and, uh, later on, if there's any maintenance or repairs that need to be done.
So right now, they're together?
They're not together. They're actually, I think the separation between the two needs to be ten feet, and it...
It's supposed to be their own trenches.
Yeah, it's actually much larger than ten feet. I think it can be pulled closer, so it would be less of a, uh, potential issue with the joining property.
But, you know, from the, I assume this, the, having them in separate trenches or the distance, uh, comes from health issue, right, or the water?
It's in case, uh, there was any leakage in this sewer line.
Right.
The water line is under pressure, but if for some reason the village's water pressure dropped out, and there was suction on that line, which would happen if you open your tap, it could potentially draw sewage from it.
So we are all good with that?
We, we, they actually have greater separation, but I'm suggesting they reduce it to the minimum or closer to the minimum, uh...
To get away from the property line?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, so that was comment one, and there, um, a lot of the other comments pertain to just detailing and some discrepancies between the details, and some additional details for the water and sewer, now that we can, uh, those were better layout now that there's a separate utility plant.
Yeah. I mean, I only... So really where we're at is that we, we could, uh, go ahead and move to a public hearing, but, um, we need to address, uh, section one fifty-one dash one of the village code. So immediately in writing, the applicant needs to submit to the village board regarding the removal of the oak tree, and that's pursuant to the code one fifty-one dash one.
We did submit a code, and that, that interpretation that was made by a member of the public was incorrect, and that law, if you look in the response letter, we provided, it clearly states, the law states that it is for only for trees that are close to the property line. We do respond to the, uh, we provide. The, uh, a responsive note stating that all trees removal and landscaping shall comply with chapter one five one of the village code and added to the plan. A statement was made by a member of the public at the September twenty-two meeting that the removal of any trees require approval from the village board trustees. That statement was incorrect. Section one fifty-one, which two required approval from the village board only, for the removal of trees within a scene or near any public sidewalk, street, avenue, or other public places in the village of Cornwall on Hudson. All trees to be removed as part of this application are located outside the street and sidewalk right-of-way, totally on the applicant's property. The base of the maple tree cited, and maybe it was an oak tree, and that's what we've been... Cited at the meeting is over eight feet from the property line. It's clear this provision is primarily to ensure that there is no removal of trees located in the strips of land between the sidewalk and the street. If the planning board were to attempt to enforce the provision, the manner raised by one person immediately would require that the village board insert itself into virtually every site plan for your planning board. And I would ask that the planning board prefer every removal of a tree from any site plan in the village to the village board. You haven't, because you're invested with the power as part of your site plan.
Do we have, I don't have a copy of what you're reading, so who was this submitted to?
It was a response letter submitted, um...
It was submitted... Do I have it?
Yeah.
This one?
Is it this?
Yeah.
Yeah, which was a good answer.
Hang on. Hang on.
Uh, I was reading one fifty-one dash two, now one fifty-one dash nine, entitled...
What response comes out?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I got it.
It's on page three.
It starts on page three and goes over to...
I guess it's a matter of, I mean, I'm gonna defer to...
Well, so I think the section that we're looking at is one fifty-one, one fifty-one one. And it's, here, I'll read it. It says, "No persons, firm or corporations, or the officers, employees of corporations shall without written consent from the Board of Trustees of the Village of Cornwall and Hudson, remove, destroy, cut, break, injure any tree, plant, or shrub, or portion thereof that is planted or growing in or near any public sidewalk, street, avenue, or other public place." So I think we're in agreement that it's not every tree on the property, but we do have the one tree, maple, oak, whatever it is, that's within a few feet of the sidewalk.
We'll read eight feet.
Well...
Eight, eight feet from the property line, and I wanna read one fifty-one dash nine. The owner of real property intends to develop a property, subdivision of the family residence, or commercial developer, the developer, shall not remove any live trees from the property until the planning board has reviewed the schedule. It is therefore clear that this provision provides that the development plan before the planning board, it's the planning board that reviews this, this... Well, I would say on a village block, if you look at the planning applications that you've reviewed, have you required that any tree that is eight feet from the property line that is being removed goes to the village board trustees? Can you show me one instance of any application before this board where a tree that is eight feet from the property line...
Well, this is tree, you're all, you're citing one fifty-one dash nine, which is trees in new developments. This is, this is an existing...
Well, this is an amendment to a development.
And, well, regardless, I don't see that one fifty-one nine contradicts one fifty-one one.
Well, once again, I would say, is there any indication of any application before this board until it was mentioned by one member who sat on a planning board, who came into public, that you required the application to go to the village board trustees for removal of a tree that was eight feet from the property?
Well, we're, we have the code in front of us right now.
It says near, it doesn't say. I mean, what is your determination of near? When did it become eight feet? I'd like to show any kind of history that the board has interpreted eight feet in any other application, instead of, of the one time it was raised in the public by a board member who lives next door to it, where you'd require that.
I don't know when this tree code was added to the...
Yeah, we don't know when it was added. I don't know that the planning board has had any applications in...
I think this is, the tree code is pretty new in the village code.
It only happened like a couple of months ago.
And I don't, there's no, there's nothing, no applications that I can refer, like, that I can think of that required a tree be removed close to a sidewalk that we've dealt with any time in that recent history. So I'm not, I mean, I can, I think you can understand, like, I'm not trying to be difficult here, but I, I think it's a simple, you, you can laugh, whatever. I think it's a simple written request to the trustees. I'm not telling you I'm not gonna give you a public hearing. I'm saying I'm gonna go ahead and schedule a public hearing, but I think because it's an interpretation of the village code, I, I, I don't wanna take responsibility for interpreting that. It is a code that says that it needs to go before the village trustees. So let's put the written appeal in, and let's put it before the trustees. The trustees can say, it's eight feet away, it's not a big deal. And, or they can say, it's, it's eight feet, and we consider that near and close. I, I can't interpret that.
In preparation for the public hearing, we will submit that letter, but I just wanna state for the record that I think if you look back, this is a requirement that was raised by one person, and I don't know on a village. This is not a lot on the town. Eight feet from the property line is a substantial distance in a village, and to say that you are gonna set a precedence now that...
I'm not setting the precedent. I'm gonna let the trustees set the precedent.
Setting a precedent or, you know, hearing from the buildings, but we'll, we'll write a letter for the village board trustees. I cannot see any way that they would, you know, not allow a development that...
We're not holding up your public hearing. I'm not trying to hold up your project at all. I just, I, someone has to make an interpretation of what near a sidewalk is, and I don't think that that should be done by me here at the planning board. I think...
I just wanna mention that, uh, the entirety of one fifty-one was mentioned in our prior comment, so to say that it was just brought up, it was included in our comment.
Right, but not the, the, yes, and we, you would say, yes, yeah, and I'm not, I'm not arguing that. I'm, I'm saying the provision that was cited regarding approval for the removal of one tree that is eight feet from the property line, I, I believe was interpreted, you know, in- incorrectly, and I think it's an interpretation that will cause this board great grief, but if you want us to write a letter to the village board, we'll write a letter to the village board.
Was that, what, what kind of grief?
Yeah.
Well, are you threatening about something?
You're, you're going to add a requirement now and put a village board of trustees that is concerned about trees in, between the sidewalk and in, in the right-of-ways, but you're putting a board, a village board of trustees, they don't have an engineer, they don't have, you know, people working for them, that now...
Well, the, the planning board's not doing that, that's what the code says, so...
Yeah, I mean, the, the code says what the code is, and our job here is to follow the code. So as long as the code is telling me that I'm supposed to ask for a written appeal on something, and listen, the trustees can come back and say, you know, "Mrs. Spalding, you've interpreted the code incorrectly," and if they do that, that's fine, and you move forward without any issues. So I, but I'm not gonna be the person that just makes that decision here. I wanna toss it back. I'm listening to legal counsel, and I'm going to toss it back to the village trustees as it's written in the code. So if you could submit a written letter, you can do it as early as tomorrow.
Yeah, I, I, I understand your position, and I'm, you know, once again, I'm just pointing out that it doesn't necessarily, it says near, and the word near, to me, or to looking at it and giving the interpretation the most leeway to the property owner, because, you know, zoning co-provisions or co-provisions are in derogation of property rights, so therefore, any interpretation goes in favor of the property owner that eight feet on a village away from the street on someone's own lot seems to me to be a stretch. And...
I, I think that argument you should make to the trustees.
I will.
We are just, we're gonna follow the order.
Yep.
I can't just waive the village code. I have to follow the village code.
Well, it's not really... I'm not, I understand your position.
I, I just understand the position I'm in. I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna set a precedent either way, so I don't wanna say eight feet is near or far. I want someone else to further define the code, and they will do that.
Can we ask the village inspector what his interpretation?
We'll, we'll ask. We'll...
No. It's... We'll just submit it in writing, and it'll go.
When did you say that law was enacted?
I don't know the date on it. I'd have to look it up. I think the tree, I know the tree code is a recent, like, these, this specifics on the tree code are, are pretty recent.
Before this application was, uh...
I, I believe so. Yes. I mean, so with that being said, I, may I, we have a resolution prepared to go ahead and schedule a public hearing for next month, so, um...
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Will, will we grab that question?
You don't have the resolution.
I do, no. I had the... Those, uh, renderings, will they be ready by the public hearing, or you're not doing them?
We, no, we will do them, and we will, we will endeavor to submit them before two weeks, and if we don't, the board determines, do you wanna hold it over? You, you know, it'll be in your position, but we will...
They've been ordered two weeks ago.
Okay. We would appreciate that for the public hearing.
I had a call from a citizen. It's about, um, the way we addressed this project, fifty-nine sixty-one First Street. They were confused whether it's, it's at the Hudson Street or it's in First Street.
Well, that's the name of their LLC.
When I, when I, I own fifty-one, nine sixty-one First Street in town, when I was buying that property, I made that LLC in place to purchase that. However, with the lender, there was an issue with the commercial entity buying it, so I, I bought the property in my name. So I had that LLC created in the hole, and when I bought two seventy-five Hudson Street, the gentleman I bought it from was, uh, sick at the time, and he needed to close really quick, and I closed in less than a week. So I did not have time to create a new LLC to purchase the property.
Which is fine.
So that's why the...
Michael, the person's question was that two seventy-five Hudson Street should be the, you know, main.
That's your, we, we...
Yeah, that's a, that's a village thing.
Owner's name, the, the address, however you wanna refer to it.
And one person was, uh, concerned about where the dumpster is gonna go.
Again, that's for the public hearing.
Okay.
And, and they need to either attend the public hearing or submit that in writing.
Okay.
So then, I'm gonna go ahead and, um, read the resolution we've prepared for the public hearing. So this is a resolution of the planning board of the village of Cornwall and Hudson, setting a public hearing on an application submitted by fifty-six sixty-one First Street LLC for site plan approval. Whereas, the planning board of the village of Cornwall and Hudson has received an application for site plan approval from fifty-six sixty-one First Street LLC that will allow for the construction of three new multifamily dwelling units on the premises situated at section one oh seven, block one, lot three, in the village of Cornwall and Hudson. Said lot also being known as two seventy-five Hudson Street, the property. And whereas, the application has been referred to the Orange County Department of Planning in accordance with general municipal law two thirty-nine dash M, and whereas, the county, Orange County Planning Department determined this was a matter for local determination, and offered no comments or suggestions. And whereas, the planning board determined that the application is an unlisted action pursuant to SECR and designated itself as lead agency for the action. And whereas, the planning board has determined that the application is complete for purposes of holding a public hearing, now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the planning board schedules a public hearing on the application and to consider any potential adverse impacts that in approval of the application may have on the environment for November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. And it is further resolved, the planning board advises the applicant that this application is subject to the provisions of one fifty-one dash one of the village of Cornwall and Hudson Code concerning trees on the property. And if we could go ahead and vote to schedule the hearing?
I said... All right.
Okay. On table. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And then we'll coordinate, uh, I'll be coordinating throughout as far as the handling of notices and, I'm not sure how Cornwall and Hudson does it, but it's...
I think you may have to coordinate that with Jean now, Manny, because Megan, our DPW secretary, is, is out on maternity. So you'll have to, with Jean Mahoney and the village, the village clerk, I think is handling that for now.
Can we prepare the notice? I mean, because last time I got the notice about fifteen minutes prior to...
The notice...
Is that one more time?
Could you repeat that, please?
Last time I had to mail a notice out, I received it about fifteen minutes before the end of business on a Friday, and they had to be out by that end.
Oh, okay. Did they come out of your office, Manny?
I was waiting for the, for the terms to draw up, so I wanted to do that again.
So how quickly?
Well, yeah, we prepare them, but they go through, uh, Megan, as far as being distributed.
Okay, so...
We're standing there with me. We'll, we'll follow up.
So I would just say follow up, but, you know, and, like I said, Megan will not, if you hit, follow up with Jean, Jean will be on top of it, so... And then we just have, um, one more, like, to repeat, go over the minutes. I gotta find them. I don't know what I did with them. It's fine, they're here somewhere. I'll just use my agenda. I mean, I read through them. Oh, here they are. Here they are.
The only thing I know I did wrong, I just looked at it for names, is I left out, um, Dean and the attorneys and everybody's names.
Okay.
Which I plugged in, so as a man... Which I plugged in, so as amended, if you approve it.
So everyone have a chance to review the minutes? You have, are you okay with it? Okay, so do I have someone that would make a motion to approve the minutes?
I make the motion.
Okay. Please, Gary Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Kristen, you're good? I would, unless there's something, hang on.
I, I made a motion to approve the minutes from July nineteen, and I don't think I was here on the date. Let me check.
I can re-listen, and we can amend it, to see if somebody else motioned to approve them. You were in on the nineteen?
I'm trying to remember.
No, maybe, you motioned to approve them.
That was the last meeting?
Wasn't that the one with Sean Buckley?
Yeah, were you here with Sean Buckley?
Oh, yeah, I was, I was at the last meeting, then I was here, yeah.
Okay, so we're good.
So just amend with the.
Just with the amendment. Okay.
Sorry.
Then, I have no idea, I don't know why they're talking to me, that's not a public hearing. And then, someone want to make a motion to close the meeting?
Will that's approved the minutes?
We did, we did already, we just had some discussion afterwards.
Yeah.
So I moved to close the meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, shut us down. Are we all?